Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting of February the 25th. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Before we go into our silent prayer, I'd like to say a few words. As we are nearing the end of our designated days of Black History, I wanted to recognize retired Major Earl Price, who passed away on February the 21st. He was just with us in December as he talked about the ABLE program, so we know him well. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the family. He was the highest ranking African American in the Sheriff Department. So as we go into our silent prayer, I would only ask that we think about him and his family. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic
which it stands
for which it stands
one nation
one nation
under God
under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to make a motion to approve of the minutes of the previous session. Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll go to public comments. There may be some comments, as you said, as relates to the public hearing. I just want to make sure there are no general comments from the public. Bridgette?
It does not appear there are general comments from the public at this time.
Thank you so much. So we'll move on to Vice President Reese. Any comments or motions?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. And thank you for the prayer and the moment of silence for retired Major Earl Price. He is also someone, growing up, roller skated, still roller skate, and he was the officer there, so a lot of folks grew up and got to know him. He watched us, you know, grow up and everything. So this was just really heartbreaking to hear this, and his sister, Shalon Price, who is a good friend of mine as well. I just, I know that she's very appreciative of the prayers that we sent out today. Also, wanted to acknowledge that Governor Dewine has asked that the flags be lowered, 223 to 226, in honor of the 500,000 Americans who have died from COVID-19, certainly too many in Hamilton County. So wanted to acknowledge that and to those families as well. Our prayers are with them as well. I also want to acknowledge and thank, this week, we were able to have vaccine. We, our board has been talking about equity, and one of the things, I had a chance to have a town hall with Governor Dewine and Commissioner Kesterman and closing the health gap, and Joe Mallory from NAACP, and one of the things we asked about was the issue of equity, and he had indicated, because we were talking about Lincoln Heights, and he had indicated if there was Lincoln Heights Church or any church that was interested, that he would get vaccine to those churches if they would contact our commissioner on health. And so I was just happy to see this week that three of the churches, Corinthian Baptist, Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist, and the Word of Deliverance are having that. And I also want to thank Commissioner Drehouse, on our behalf, also sent a letter to the governor with the equity plan for our county. So certainly more work to be done, but there is, there has been some movement, so I want to thank them for that. In addition to that, I want to say that I have a motion that was just recently sent to the administration. I had talked to Jeff Aludo, but I wanted the whole board to be aware of this, because the board has been very committed and out front on the issue of equity and racism as a public health crisis. And as you have indicated, Madam President, this is the last day of Black History Month. However, Black History is every day and every month, but this is the month that we celebrate it. And so as we move forward in this issue of equity, I am asking and have asked, and would like to have it presented to our board, a report on how many, because we've got to look internally first before we go external, but looking at how many of our workforce in the county is African American? How many are supervisors? How many are directors? How many have moved up with promotions? What type of training do we have to promote those from within? And be able to get that back to us as we look at those issues of equity within our own county administration? I know those things are important to you both as well. And then secondly, I had a meeting with Robert Bell, and in the second part of this motion would be to look at how many of our contracts are no bid contracts? How many of our term contracts? And how many of those are with African American minority and women-owned businesses? Because it's tough to get in the system if you've got term contracts and you haven't had a chance to get in, or if you have no bid contracts, which we vote on on a daily basis, but we, I don't, at least I don't have any idea how many of those are available. And then lastly, you all had voted to have a CROSEN study. Last year, I think it was in July what I saw, which is a very bold step of 2020. We're spending a lot of money now in 2021 to get a date on when that will hit the streets and when we think that will be done, so that we, you know, every day counts with people not being able to participate if we don't have the information. So I've talked about this to our administrator, but I wanted to be on record, and would like to have something back, you know, with, you know, with at least 30 days of something that could be reported to the board, and however the board would like, if we want to have during a staff meeting, Madam President, if that's something you like. But I think this is some information. We have to know where we are to understand where we would like to go and need to go. So I just thought the last day of Black History Month is fitting to put a motion like this forward. So thank you.
Thank you. And I would think that the, the composition of those that are in different departments should not be very hard to find out. So I think that's a great thing to do, because there are some departments that are better than others as it relates to composition. So I'm looking forward to that report also. Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I too want to send condolences out to Major Earl Price's family. You know, speaking of the resolution declaring racism a public health crisis in Hamilton County, he took the lead in the sheriff's office when it came to the active bystander training. It was brought to the attention of the sheriff, and Major Price raised his hand immediately and said, "I will help," and he did. And so we got to know him through that effort, and it's such a huge loss. I think, I know he was retired, but he had a large footprint in this community. So I share, and I appreciate you, Madam President, having the prayer for him today. Also, something else is coming up tomorrow. So we, every year, we do an annual report out from the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition, formerly known as the Heroin Coalition. And so tomorrow is the date for the annual report. We generally have, in person, not this year, but we generally have a press event where all the subcommittees, the Prevention Treatment, Public Health, and Law Enforcement, report out about the year's progress and what our vision is leading into this year. And so we are going to do that tomorrow. It's at 11 o'clock. It's virtual, as I said. And so if anybody is interested, it'll be streamed via Facebook, our Facebook page and the YouTube channel. And so again, you know, our numbers for overdose deaths in the community are just slightly declined from last year. COVID really threw a wrench in the work as people became very isolated and were not able to access treatment, some of that inner interaction with peer-to-peer support. And so it was a really challenging year for people, both individuals and the agencies that provide that help and that support. So in the midst of a pandemic, it's not terrible news. I mean, other communities saw increases, so comparatively, we did okay, but our numbers are still very high. And so we are not, you know, necessarily celebrating the numbers, but noting that we do have a trajectory here where it's a downward trend, and that is, that is good news. So anyway, we'll have the report out tomorrow at 11:00 here virtually, and hope that people can tune in and hear the subcommittee's report on the work that they've been doing. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Just a couple notes. I had an interview this week with a new reporter who is in town on WLWT, David Seal. His focus is really community, and he's going to look at things in a different perspective. I'm sure he'll be talking to both of you also, but I got a chance to meet him. He's excited about Hamilton County and presenting things in a different perspective. He's working also, of course, with Curtis Fuller, so I just wanted to throw his name out. And then I met Austin Riley, who's with the Regional Chamber, a young, vibrant, exciting African American young man. He's 26 years, I want to say, old, because he just has the greatest ideas. And so I'm just looking forward to working closer with him, and I'm sure he'll be contacting both of you. He just is going to be great. He's been in that role for about, for about a year, but I think he's just going to be great for Hamilton County. And then also, I had another meeting with the Lincoln Heights Village Manager, who's been there for three months. She, she's excited about Lincoln Heights, and so we were both pretty excited about the things that are going to come forward for Lincoln Heights. Of course, we brought up the gun range and where we are with it and not to remain silent as relates to that, but development in general. She talked about Hamilton County staff, specifically Joy Pearson was one who has really been helpful with Lincoln Heights. So I won't start naming names, because she said, you know, that the county staff has been so helpful, and Port Authority has been very helpful with them also. So also, I had an interview with Curtis Fuller yesterday, part of his Black History Program, which will be on television Saturday at 7:30, Channel 5, if you're able to see it. I think it's inclusive of several people. Just wanted to throw that out for people. And that will be all that I have right now. Go on to our administrator, Jeff Aludo. We have no by-leaves today.
Actually, we do have two by-leaves. By leave one and two, I'll get to those in just a second. Do you have them on your agenda, Madam President?
No, I don't.
Okay.
It's okay.
Well, first, to start with, just some quick comments. First, I would also like to join the board in expressing condolences for the passing of Major Earl Price. I knew Earl for a while, but got the chance to really work with him as the sheriff's office started to take the lead in putting together the ABLE program. And as the board said, he just leapt into that, took the bull by the horns, and just did a great job, not only managing it internally, but working with the outside resources, Georgetown University, the New Orleans Police Department, and making sure that the Hamilton County had a seat at the table as it related to implementing that program here locally. So I just want to express my condolences to the friends and family of Major Price. Secondly, just as the board is likely aware, but at 1:30 today, in a couple of minutes, we will also be kicking off the, the meeting of the Tax Levy Review Committee to start reviewing the children's services levy this year. So as the board, the board is very well aware of the importance of that levy to some of the critical services of the county in terms of preventing the abuse and neglect and dependency of children in the community promoting adoptions and kinship, making sure that the youth in this community have treatment options as it relates to trauma that they experience, et cetera. So really excited about kicking that levy review process off. One of the things for those watching from home that the county does that may be a little unique is that anytime a levy that is controlled by the Board of County Commissioners is going to go on the ballot, which this is potentially slated to go on the ballot in November, we have a tax levy review committee that performs a performance review of the levy, how it's worked, how the programs have worked, to make recommendations for improvements, efficiencies, et cetera. So that process kicks off today for a first meeting, expecting a final report in late May. There'll then be some public hearings, and typically, the board acts to place levies on the ballot sometime around the Fourth of July. So I just wanted to mention to the board that that was kicking off today. And that would do it for my comments. I do have two by-leave items. The first by-leave is by-leave one in your packets, Commissioner. This is a resolution for the approval of the Downtown Cincinnati Improvement District, the Plan 2022 through 2025. The board is aware the county has 17 parcels in the Special Improvement District that makes up the Downtown Cincinnati Improvement District. Every parcel is assessed a certain amount to provide into, provide dollars into the Special Improvement District. In this particular case, those dollars go to fund a lot of the Safe and Clean Programs that occur in the, in the Central Business District, and this is defined as the area south of Central, north of the river, with the exception of the stadiums, west of Ecclestone and east of Central Avenue. So that whole block of the city is included in this Special Improvement District. So it funds Safe and Clean Programs, expanded police programming when needed, programs to alleviate and engage panhandlers and workforce development programs, litter abatement, graffiti removal, all those types of things. On an annual basis, this is approximately $160,000 to $170,000 for all of those 17 parcels that the county owns downtown. It is a four-year plan, 2022 through 2025, and the resolution before you would authorize me to sign off on the petition approving the county's participation in the Improvement District. They require 60% of the front footage of property owners to agree to that plan before they can move forward with approval. The administrative, this has been something we've been a part of for many years since its inception. The administration does recommend approval.
Thank you, Jeff. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number one, the resolution to support the Improvement District. You're muted.
Second, I'm muted? Sorry.
No.
I thought I clicked it and didn't. My apologies. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By-leave item number two is a budget adjustment for $775,000 for riverfront parking projects. Broad, at a high level, this really consists of two things. First is $250,000, $200,000 of which is a grant, $50,000 is matched, to convert our variable message signs that we are putting in place down on the riverfront from cellular service to fiber, to make sure that the connectivity there is faster, quicker, and can be updated quicker, so that it's responsive to the needs of traffic entering the downtown riverfront area. The second component of the budget adjustment is $500,000 for four additional signs. As we are not yet moving forward on Lot 28 of the banks, we were going to include those signs in the cost of that portion of the project, and because we're not doing that at this point in time, we're looking to fund these separately. The goal, of course, being that by the time we have the music venue built out, as COVID starts alleviating, people are coming back down to the banks, so you got the Reds and the Bengals kicking back up, that we, as quickly as possible, get to the point where we have a real-time integrated variable message signage system that as people are coming in on the highways, coming across through on Fort Washington Way, down on the Third, Second and Third Street, that there is a real-time signage system in place to make sure that those, those travelers are connected in with our parking system in real time, so that both, so that it avoids gridlock, and make sure that our parking system is utilized as efficiently as possible. Phil Beck is also on the line. I don't want to, if there's anything that Phil would like to say, Phil has worked a lot on this project over the past several years. Phil, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to say in addition?
Can you hear me okay?
Can. I can hear you now.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I don't have anything in particular to add to Jeff's comments. He, I think he clarified it very well, but these, just to add on, these four signs, part of the variable message signage project, is essentially completing our system, be current with the opening of our current bank's Phase 3B. So Phase 3B introduces two brand-new entrances into the garage off of Marying, and will also activate the current entrance off of South Race. Now that we're building the turnaround at the south terminus of Ray Street, that section of Ray Street will see a lot more activity, particularly when people are heading south, going around the turnaround, dropping people off at the front door of the music venue or there at the new expansion of Smale Park. And then the fourth component is a four sign on Ramp LL, which is essentially the intersection of Second Street and Main Street. When you are sitting at that stoplight right now, if you were to, to look straight ahead on Second Street, you sort of see this ramp that just disappears. It goes down in elevation and curves to the right almost 90 degrees at the bottom of the ramp. So what we want to communicate to the users is that there are a multitude of parking options. Once you go down that, that currently unmarked street, you can turn right into the Central Riverfront Garage, you can turn left and then right into the East Garage, you've got the East, West Broadway Lot, you also have the Transit Center surface parking. So we want to make sure we communicate that to folks.
Thank you, Phil.
Okay. Anything else, Jeff?
Nothing further. We recommend approval.
Yeah, I remember us going through this discussion and just thinking about, you know, how people come downtown, and with all the new projects, we don't want them to get frustrated and say, "Oh, I can't, you know, can't go this way, that way parking." And it's just ideal for that, for that purpose, of course. That's why it was implemented, and hopefully, we will pass it. I will ask the commission if they have any questions or comments as it relates to by by-leave number two. Vice President Reese?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I did have questions about this, wanted to get clarification. I know the first one, we were able to get a grant from the state, which was huge for us to be able to get a grant. And so I did have questions on the additional signs and what that was doing. I will say, from a larger standpoint, one of the things that I would, I'm really pushing for our county to be, you know, a smart county, and I think this falls right into hand with that, not only for, you know, we're starting with signs and certainly to some of our larger facilities where people will go, tourists will come in from out of town, and people come in and go to. So I will support it for that, but I also want to put on the table just the larger issue of this to be as a step that should be expanded throughout the county as we look at doing different projects for making Hamilton County a smart county. Madam President, you had mentioned Lincoln Heights, and I appreciate the mention of that. I also met with them as well, but like, they're looking at a pilot program for, you know, Wi-Fi. And so those, I think these are the type of things, even though this is a bigger project, but I just think these are the type of things that we start connecting all of the dots, that Hamilton County becomes a smart county with the new technology, the new Wi-Fi, the fiber, all of that. So we become a futuristic county. So I support this, and I want to thank Phil this morning for going over this with me, so I had a clear understanding between the differences of the two signed projects, and I would appreciate that. So thank you, Jeff, as well, for putting that together, and I will be supportive.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, thanks, Phil, for working so hard on this. I think that as we continue to develop the rest of the banks, this is going to become even more important as we try to direct people into the appropriate space for parking and and just direct them, because, you know, there's so much going on now at the banks. So I appreciate your diligence here. We've been working on this one for a while, so I'm happy to support the resolution.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the budget adjustment for the riverfront project.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse? I'm sorry, Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thanks, Phil. Okay.
And Commissioners, just one last comment to Commissioner Reese's comments from earlier. I will work with staff and will provide the board with the communication, the details or timeline for pulling together the requested information on HR and procurement efforts as, as well as additional information on the status of the CROSEN study, et cetera. So I'll provide the board something as quickly as possible, maybe this week, early next week, in terms of the timeline. I think you are correct, Madam President, that the, the HR data should be very easily attainable, maybe a little bit longer on some of the purchasing data, just to go through the different contractual systems that we have. But I will provide something to the board here very shortly on a, on a timeline for turning that around. So thank you for the request and happy to, to respond on it.
Great, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
As, as we do that work, I believe that Robert Bell has put that together. It's, I'm sure, a data document at this point, because we had that a while back, but I think it might be helpful to have Robert come in, and I don't remember, Commissioner Reese, I feel like you probably were not here when we had the BOLD initiative detailed to us from Robert, and it kind of gets to this idea that it's not just about, like you said, contracting and outside activity of the county, but it's also about the internal activity of the county and our employment and, and, you know, how we behave as an organization. And so Robert has the BOLD initiative. I don't know if you've gotten an update on that, but Jeff, it might be helpful to have Robert come in and give us a high level about what that initiative did attempt and is attempting to do in conjunction with now the disparity study and some of the other things that we're moving on. So I hope that we can kind of roll all this stuff together.
Certainly happy to coordinate that, in addition to some of the other management initiatives that we're working on in terms of succession planning, training, that type of thing. I will say, I know Commissioner Reese met with Mr. Bell the other day, received a full update on the, on the BOLD program, but, but happy to, happy to roll that, that into whatever a report out the board would, would like for this as we get to the point of having the data collected.
Madam President, I just want to say, I did get that. I did get a presentation, a private presentation on it. I think you all had, have some very bold things, and I think now that months have gone past, we can come back with now, what is, what is the data, what has been the result? So, but, but I do thank him for, for, you know, for the PowerPoint. So thank you, Jeff, again, too, for saying you can get this back to us. And I just think this is something, you know, all of the folks should know, you know, and we should, and we should know also, but all the folks would know, and then we could see what is the progress or what are things that we need to, you know, do better, maybe.
I think it's worth to have Robert come back, even though we've all had, had the presentation. We have a new constituency out there possibly that has not heard it. So, yeah, I would like to include him again, so, thank you. Um, so we're running a little late, but we're on time for our public hearing, a hearing to consider the Parakeet Drive local sewer. Who is going, are you going to kick it? Oh, there's Diana. How are you?
Good afternoon, Madam President and Commissioners.
Good afternoon, yes.
Jack Renning Camp is going to kick this off for us today.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jack Renning Camp. I'm the Division Manager for the Office of the Director and manage and oversee our legislative initiatives and, and representation to the Commissioners. And so today, we're going to present a public hearing for a local sewer project. With me to do that is the project manager, Alex With me to do that is the Project Manager Alex Schumak, as well as the Prince, one of the Principal Engineers in the Wastewater Engineering Division, Matt Spadari. Also on this meeting is Chris Griffith and Craig Davidson from Hamilton County Public Health, who will have a portion of the presentation to talk about health issues in, in this area, as well as Joy Pearson with Hamilton County Community Development that will brief us on an initiative that has been launched to assist in payment for some of the costs that are related to this particular project. So I'm going to share my screen. Let me see if I can. Everyone can see this?
Yes.
Great. So the, the project before you is for a local sewer on Parakeet Drive. It's located in Green Township in Hamilton County. And the agenda that I want to go through and the, the particular components of the project I want to touch upon is various components that deal with sewer assessments background, as well as the public hearing, the background to it for today's public hearing. The project's legislative history, which is important to detail how we got here and why. And then to go through project details, the project costs, the various project communication methods and technologies we're using to talk with the property owners, and of course, public health issues. So to begin with, and it's been a while since MSD has presented to your board on a local sewer assessment project. And I understand that that may have, you may have a need to refresh this information. So sewer assessments is both a legal mechanism, legislative process, and an MSD policy that facilitates bringing public sewers to unsued properties within the MSD service area. Sewer assessment need, benefit, and cost are all regulated under law and policy. For need, there are three principal things that define a need for a sewer assessment project. Either it's coming from the property owners themselves based upon a petition, either with one hundred percent or a majority support, which is defined under policy is fifty percent plus one. Or a local Board of Health has issued some sort of order or has notified the property owners that there is a problem with their onsite sewer systems called home sewage treatment systems, or HSTSs. Or finally, the Ohio EPA has issued a finding and order to the board indicating that there needs to have a remediation because of outstanding health issues with a particular project area. For benefit, both Ohio law and MSD's rules and regulations govern why and how we look at benefit with an eye to the fact that both are designed to help protect property owner rights. And finally, for cost, under policy, again, MSD rules and regulations, it has been determined that property owners will pay no more than $12,000 for the assessed public sewer cost. This is partially paid for the entire cost of the public sewer by MSD credits, which is all cost beyond $12,000, as well as a note, a special note, that the public sewer cost does not include work performed on private property. I also want to emphasize that sewer assessments, as compared to other MSD public improvement projects, are not driven by MSD. We're here as basically a facilitator to advocate on behalf of the property owners, but it's the property owners or it's health issues that drive the project, not MSD. So in this particular situation, there isn't one hundred percent support of the property owners involved in this project. And when that occurs, under law, we have to have a public hearing before your board. That's the purpose of the hearing today, is to review the, the facts and the issues surrounding this project, and then to make a decision of how to go forward. Under law, hearing is established pursuant to the resolution that this board adopted in December tenth in 2020, establishing this hearing. It's required that the hearing be advertised as a legal notice in, in a newspaper of general circulation, which is the Cincinnati Enquirer for, for Hamilton County. And a notice provided to the property owners not of the hearing going to be held, which was done on January eleventh. And finally, that the hearing is not less than twenty-four days after the first notification, which is the notice provided to the property. So in prior legislation, just to reiterate that this is a project that has a little bit of a length to it. We have a process that begins, again, with a petition coming from the property owners that was entered into the record in 2011. And then there are design services funding for the project again in 2011, and various different budgetary items that occurred between 2014 and 2018 until the board approved the plans, the specifications, the tentative assessments, and the necessity of having this public hearing in December of 2020. As you'll see, sewer assessment projects are a little bit more complex than the run-of-the-mill garden variety MSD public improvement projects, because there is a series of steps that have to take place beyond the public hearing in order for the project to go forward. One of which is the property owners can avail themselves to write to you and provide written comments concerning whether they oppose or support the project. They have a five-day waiting period in which to do that. There's also a series of resolutions that follow that period, that waiting period to deal if they object, that the board has to address any of those objections and make a determination how it's going forward through a resolution to proceed with construction and appropriating construction funding and advertising bidding the project. Here's the location of the project in Green Township. It is off of Sheet Road. As you can see, there are ten parcels that are involved here, one of which is a, that are outlined in the blue outline, that are both single families. There are nine single-family properties and one vacant parcel. So as I mentioned previously, this project is coming to you based upon a petition. And at the time that the petition was tendered to MSD, one of our processes is to not only validate the petition, but validate that, that the property owners who will benefit from this project indeed want it. That's called a polling. Six, initially six parcels supported the petition in, in January of 2011. And then in our polling effort in February of 2011, seven parcels supported the project, or seventy percent. That's the basis of bringing it forward at this point in time. It's also worth noting that five parcels changed ownership since 2011, including three that supported the project. Under our policy, under the MSD rules and regulations, the vacant parcel could be placed in a land conservation easement if the property owner decided to do so. This would then mean that there would be no assessment for that parcel, but the action must occur placing it in that land conservation easement prior to when the board would consider its resolution to proceed. And property owners are advised to contact Cardinal Land Conservancy, Inc., which is currently the agency in Hamilton County that would manage this for them. What the project proposes to do is to install nine hundred and seventy linear feet of eight-inch diameter gravity sewer, along with various appurtenances such as sewer laterals and manholes in both right-of-way as well as in easements. As I mentioned before, the project does not include any of improvements that are on the property, what we term at MSD, the private site improvements. These are each property owner's cost in addition to the cost that they would bear for a public improvement, which again, would be no more than $12,000. We obtained permanent easements to build the project, and we have anticipated construction dates depending on your board's decision to go forward with the project or not between June of this year through October of this year. And of course, we'll provide communications to the property owners when we're going into a construction phase. Now as to cost. So as you can see, the total cost of the project that's estimated at this point in time and the basis for this hearing is just above $763,000 with a per parcel cost of $76,000. MSD, as I mentioned, has a credit that's available to all property owners that reduces the cost from the $76,000 to $12,000. That per parcel is roughly $64,000 or totaling $643,000 for all ten parcels, which is roughly eighty-four percent of the total project cost. There's also a credit that's available to property owners in local sewer assessment projects for eliminating HSTSs that are eligible. These properties for this particular project do not have that eligibility. And it is Hamilton County Public Health who determines, based upon their inspection or their records for the particular onsite systems, if they're eligible or not. So that leaves us with about sixteen percent of the cost being borne by the, the benefited property owners or $12,000, a total of $120,000. So in terms of financing the improvement, there are several options that property owners have as they're going forward if the project proceeds to a construction stage. And one, of course, is private financing, cash payment in full or in part when assessed, or self-financing. Through public efforts, we have several different methodologies and several different availabilities of funding that include, of course, the assessment credit that MSD funds. And I've already spoken about that. The property cost can be placed on the tax duplicate with payment over a twenty-year period. And this is analogous to a lien on the property, so the debt is assigned to the property deed. If a property owner chooses this method of financing it, then anyone who purchases that property would inherit that cost. There's also availability through Hamilton County Public Health or a water pollution control loan fund connection grant. I'll defer to Mr. Griffith or Mr. Davidson to talk in more detail about that if you have any questions. And then there is the HIP grant, the HIP program grant that's available through Hamilton County that is analogous to a home equity loan with a three percent cost associated with that. And then finally, there is a CDBG tap grant that is through Hamilton County Community Development. And Ms. Pearson has any specifics to that particular financing option? Should you have questions? As I mentioned, we have a number of ways that we communicate with property owners during this process. It's, part of it is dealing with communicating with, to them about the process itself, as well as the legal notice that is established for the public hearing. We have a sewer assessments specific webpage on our website, MSDGC.org, that has information about projects on it. For this particular hearing, we're required under statute and as a normal process to send out certified mailings to the property owners. And of course, telephone, email, Twitter, Facebook, we communicate about sewer assessment projects through those electronic mechanisms. So I have a chart here of the various health issues and associated with, with the properties in this project. And I'd like to turn it over to Chris Griffith if he can guide you through this particular array.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jack. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Chris Griffiths with Hamilton County Public Health. I'll be very brief today. I just have this one slide, but will be available for any questions you have at the end. We'll be discussing the onsite sewage treatment systems that are currently at these properties, also referred to as household systems or septic systems. The nine properties, of the nine properties, four of the systems during our last inspection were completely failed and would require a complete replacement system should the sanitary sewer not be extended. One of the properties would require a repair, which would likely be less than a thousand dollar repair. And the four remaining properties, they, although the systems are working, they are over fifty-five years old. And so should the sanitary sewer not be extended, you know, that those property owners should be looking at replacement in the near future. The typical cost for a replacement system varies a lot depending on what type of, what type of system, the topography. We can't really get into the specifics on each, on, on each individual system. But on the low end, a typical replacement is $25,000 for a direct discharge type system. And unfortunately, the code does not allow those systems unless a property cannot do a soil-based system. And a soil-based system typically is around $35,000 to $50,000 per property. So although our, although, you know, we did not move this project forward through a, through a board action or through the Ohio EPA, this project really came before the board through an assessment sewer petition request through the property owners, likely driven by the fact that there were so many failing systems on, in, in the project area. And that's all I have, but I'm definitely open for any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. And that concludes the presentation for, for this particular public hearing. I understand that there are also potentially some of the benefited property owners who are available to issue comments to your board. If you have any comments, we're happy to take them.
Thank you, Jack. So we can open it up, Bridget, if we have anyone that would like to comment during the public hearing.
So far, we do not have anyone who is looking to comment, Commissioner.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Jack, what's the average age of those homes in, in that area?
I will defer to our project manager. I believe they were constructed in the mid-fifties. But Alex, if you have any information along those lines?
You know, Jack, I don't have information in front of me for the age of the homes. I do believe they were built in fifty-sixties range, but I'm not absolutely sure about that.
Okay.
We can certainly bring that back to you.
Sure. I appreciate it. I just asked the question because as we know, I mean, if they were built in the twenties or thirties or even forties, even now, that the difficulty of trying to get to a sewer or not having a sewer would be even more difficult. And so I was just, I'm going to open it up to the other Commissioners, but such a long process to get to where we are now started in 2011, the initial start of everything. So, but I know legislatively, that's how it goes. But I'll open it up to Vice President Reese, if she, oh.
Madam, Madam President, yes, I agree with that point of it is a very long process. That's the first thing I was looking at. My question is, when you get the, the people saying they want this, can you give me what that percentage is again?
For this particular project, it was seventy percent of ten property owners. Nine single families and one parcel is a, owns the single-family property as well as a vacant residential person.
Okay. And then the ones that aren't vacant, are those folks, are those still the same owners?
Of the, the ten properties, five have changed hands. One of the ones that changed hands was also the vacant parcel. And in that, of that number that changed hands of the five, three had indicated in the past, the previous owner, that they were in favor of the project and two did not, had never responded to our polling.
And so the new three, the new three owners, have they parted the seventy percent or no?
We have not repolled the area. Our process is that it currently exists is not to go back and repol those properties to see if, as properties change hands, if they still support the project. So we don't have any current information. Was hoping that those property owners, whether new or old, would be here to address your board to issue their comments of whether they still want to go forward or not with this project.
Okay.
That's, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, I'm just, I wanted to make sure I understand this. So the new owners say, okay, this started eleven years ago. So some people have sold their properties, about five of them. And the new people who have the properties, you're saying it does not require us to even let them know that this is an issue? Or am I, am I getting that right?
We, we let them know when, when we have the public hearing, when we schedule the public hearing. Prior to that effect, our policy hadn't undertaken that particular element to say, we're reaching out to you as a new property owner. We have not, while we track new property, property changes for, for assessment projects. We haven't reached out to those property owners in this particular case.
Okay. And then my other question is, about eleven years ago, they, you know, eleven years ago, years ago, we didn't have COVID. So economy may have been doing better. How does that play in? You know, maybe I had the money eleven years ago to do this. Has it, do you sense that there's been any change now that COVID has come in and people's money has gotten a little funny?
Well, I'm sure that COVID has impacted everyone to, to a financial extent. And that certainly is at one of the, the items that is the forefront of our minds. However, both Ohio law and our policy does not consider ability to pay as one of the components. However, what the policy did do when it was drafted in two thousand and five, that's when this current policy was established, is it said, we're going to try to tout the benefits of getting onto public sewers versus private onsite systems. That is, as Mr. Griffith has indicated, that can fail and can discharge pollutants, pollutants to the environment. We're going to get on to public systems and to do that, we're going to give you an opportunity to reduce your risk. In other words, to cover all of your costs for twelve thousand dollars. So that's the benefit that existed at the time when the policy was crafted in twenty-two thousand and five and still exists. And there's an additional benefit right now that's occurring with Hamilton County Community Development in terms of if a property owner is eligible and qualified under the CDBG program, that they have the opportunity to avail themselves of getting an additional six thousand dollars off of, off of that twelve thousand. So their total cost would be potentially, again, if they qualified, six thousand dollars. But I'll leave that program to Ms. Pearson to, if you have any questions to discuss that.
No, I just have two final questions on here. One question, and I asked both of them, then you can answer them. My, my first question is that the cost that you're saying that will be twelve thousand dollars that we have a program also can maybe take it to six. That is not your only cost. There are some other costs. Is there other costs associated? Can you talk about that? And then my other question, last question is, when you said that it's tied to the deed. A lot of times people buy a home and they somehow are not told about different things that are tied to the house. And they get stuck with a, you know, it's kind of like buying a car, you get stuck with a limit, but a house is a, is a big limit to have. And we hear those disaster stories. Is there anything in there to make sure that if this is tied to the deed, that if someone's buying that house, that that has to be divulged? So that they don't walk into something not knowing that they would have this sewer assessment tied to the house. So those are my two que, two final questions.
And those are great questions, Commissioner. I'm glad you brought them up. And I'll tackle the second one first. Not being an attorney, but the issue with property transfers is really title, title and title. And we don't have a mechanism, MSD doesn't have a mechanism in order to assist the property owners to review titles. That's a private effort that they have to do with the buyer, with their firm that they're using to purchase the real estate or with a good title company. And that's what we advise property owners is to make sure you check the title. Because we don't play a part in that. And that is a very important component, just so you, as you indicated, so you know what you're buying. Because there could be a portion of the cost or all of the cost that might be associated with a sewer assessment that is then tied into the title. And that then will pass on to you as part of your property tax duplicate that you would pay on a semi-annual basis. In terms of the additional costs that are out there, there are costs to basically disconnect from your existing onsite system and connect to the public sewer. As I mentioned, those costs are the private side costs, as we've referenced in this hearing and what we reference in our policy, are not part of the public improvement. They're not part of the twelve thousand dollars. The range of those costs vary. And we recommend that property owners investigate with plumbers, potentially banding together as a group to get the best price and to see what those, those costs will actually be. They range widely. I hesitate to give a range simply because that's nothing that we specialize in. And it's a private market-based decision. But that range includes such things as abandoning the existing system and running, potentially running pipe from where it disconnects to connect to the tap that MSD leaves as part of public improvement.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Jack, I, I'm gonna agree with what has been said related to the timing of this. It seems as though this has taken a very long time to get to, you know, this point. My recollection is they don't generally take this long. Is, is that correct? What is the average time for a process like this to play out?
Usually, we're looking at assessment projects that run in the three to four-year range. This one took a bit longer. And I'll reference back to our last public hearing, which was Maple Knoll Public, Local Sewer in October of two thousand and nineteen. That also took a bit of time, in part because it, there are multiple project managers that were involved in, in this project over time. But more to the point that there were easements involved that had to be acquired during this timeframe. And finally, issues with, in various projects of the consent decree and the bridge projects of the consent decree began to take precedence and the time of the project managers who were involved. So it is a bit long, but yes.
Well, in that case, is it unprecedented? I, I hear you saying that it is for us to go back and do a poll again? Because we've had significant turnover in the residents that are going to be impacted by the project?
I would leave that to your board as a decision.
I think, you know, I, I wonder if that should be on the table. And I, because, and, and just to be clear, there are failed systems, which is a huge problem for all of us, right? The environment and, and the people that have the failed system, because there's a tremendous cost associated with replacing those if this does not occur, right? So there's a, a, a higher cost for the folks that have failed systems. Not everybody has a failed system, but they're old and they're likely to fail maybe within the next, you know, number of years. So there is an, I think, a benefit to the residents. There's a, like a public benefit that I think we're all concerned about, but there's also a benefit to the residents in doing this. So I, I just, but I am a little uneasy, and I think you've heard it from all three of us, about the fact that there's been such a significant turnover when there's so, so few houses involved to begin with. And so, Madam President, I leave it to you, but I do wonder if, given the fact that it's taken this long, I don't mean to stall the project. I think I personally am in favor of this, especially since seventy percent of the previous residents thought it was to their benefit to do it. There's also a pop, public benefit here, so I'm inclined to support it. But I do wonder if there shouldn't be some kind of threshold related to the timing where we, a policy initiative kicks in and says, you gotta go repol just to get a better sense of where the residents are at this moment in time related to the project.
Thank you. Well, well, actually, I have two comments. The three new homeowners, would that impact the seventy percent that's needed to move forward? If they said, no, I don't want it, would you still have, would you still have that seventy percent?
Considering the fact that this would be a, an entirely new polling exercise?
No, I'm saying without, without.
Oh, without them?
Poll it, and three of them say did not want it. Would, and if, let's assume that you did do the poll, three said they didn't want it. But the other ones did, would that still give you the seventy percent is what I'm asking?
I don't believe so, Commissioner.
I didn't hear you.
I don't believe so, Commissioner.
Hmm. Okay. So that tells me that we probably need to go back and repol, in my opinion. Not, not only to get to seventy percent, but also to be transparent and open to those new owners so they know what's being planned. That, that would be my, my thought on that.
Can I ask a clarifying question related to what you just asked?
Sure.
So I, I think that the, Jack, were you responding to this idea that you've got the property owners? Seventy percent said yes. Some have turned over. Of those that have turned over, are they included in that seventy percent positive? Is that what you just said?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to clarify. And, and, you know, and I heard you say earlier, they're aware of the project because there's, we're having a public hearing about it. They've chosen not to weigh in so far, right? Is that true?
I'll defer to Bridget, but I don't believe anyone is participating.
So it's, it's this weird quandary where, you know, there, it's not that they're not aware of it, but, but they weren't part of the poll. I don't know. It just, Jack, what it was, to go back and do another poll, what, what is the delay created if, if you do that?
Not a delay because the project goes forward at your discretion. So it's a, it's a matter of a couple of weeks of making that contact and then seeing if they respond. In the, the poll that resulted in seventy percent, we had three property owners who did not respond. So ten responded. Nobody said no. But seven said yes, and three didn't even respond to the question.
Sure. Bridget, Bridget has a public comment waiting to speak. Bridget, if you'd like to allow them to speak.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I believe we might have a person from the public. He's, the handle is CG. CG, if you would like to address the board, you are unmuted on my end. And if you are on a phone to unmute on your end, you can also try star six. I don't believe there is public comment.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I, I do think we should, you know, I think it's worth going back just for us, you know, I think, I can't speak for everybody, but I think it makes us feel a little more comfortable. I mean, you're talking eleven years. Can you imagine what happened eleven years ago? And, you know, we don't know what the current situation of the homeowners are now that they may not have had to face eleven years ago. And I just think that, you know, helps us kind of just be current. We, we, you know, we double-checked and then for me, I know it helped me make a better decision moving forward. So that, it would help me out if we could do that, not to delay the whole thing, but we already delayed eleven years. That's a lot. Oh, yeah, that, actually a decade, over a decade, we, we've delayed. So I think a little more time won't hurt us, I hope.
And, and I agree. I think the consensus of the board is to go back and repol, Jack, so.
Okay, Commissioners.
Yes, I'd like to, yes.
Madam President, if, if I
Yeah, Jeff.
I, I, I don't disagree with the position of the board on this. It has been eleven, eleven years, obviously. I think in the past, part of the reticence to establish a, a time threshold for, I, I think I heard it inferred that maybe we should, if it's been so long that we go back automatically and repol, is wanting to make sure that is, once the petition is approved and MSD actually starts investing public resources and acquiring right-of-way easements, et cetera, that we don't want there to be kind of a built-in incentive for people not to negotiate, not to, not to work with the public body. And if we don't want to set up a system that essentially results automatically in hitting that time threshold and then having to go back and repol. So I think in the past, it's been left to exactly this type of dynamic where if the board, from their policy perspective, feels like the circumstances require that, that we go back and do that. But it's not necessarily a set in stone policy that as of this point in time, you go back and automatically repol. So I just wanted to raise that point as well as, and Jack went through this very nicely, but just to raise the attention for those who may be watching as well, that the board in the past has been very, I think, in terms of overall policies to support residents in this regard. You do have the, the sewer credits and the maximum twelve thousand dollar assessed cost on a homeowner, which is was a, a big step towards funding most of this for homeowners. There was also a couple, well, I say a couple of years, maybe five, six, seven years ago now. The board was having a, a big conversation about the private side costs as well. And we realized after a lot of discussion that legally that was going to be a really tough issue to get to. But what we did wind up doing is creating a separate credit in the system that now exists. Whereas if someone is a part of one of these projects and has to abandon their, their septic system, yet they recently made an investment in a system that is essentially compliant or has the capability of appropriately treating that, that wastewater, that there is an additional credit that applies to essentially compensate those homeowners for the depreciated value of that, of that system. So the board's been pretty progressive in this regard in terms of, of trying to make things as easy as possible for the homeowners. And I think part of that gets to this notion of what you just did, and that is taking it on a case-by-case basis. If the circumstances call for going back, you go back. And so I just wanted to provide that context to the board.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff, for that clarity. And I, you know, this whole sewer petition process, I don't know how you guys go about advertising this, but I'm thinking more villages and municipalities, they, they need to know about this if they don't. So I'm not sure if it's on your website or not, but this is something certainly because the sewer systems just in general in Hamilton County are not very good and they're very old. So how we can go about doing that, I'm not sure. And one thing that I heard you say, Jeff, at the beginning, not Jeff, but Jack, the advertising for the hearing is done in the Cincinnati Enquirer to possibly expand the advertisement for the hearings and that, and not just limit it to the Cincinnati Enquirer. I'd like to see that happen. I'm not seeing every newspaper, but, you know, a more diverse population can, can be aware of it. So as we move forward, if we can look at, I know it may be additional money, but I think it's worth it for people to keep track of what hearings are going on as it relates to their ability to maybe be a part of the process. So.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you very, Diana, did you want to say something? Okay, she said no. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Samardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move forward to our regular agenda items. The engineer has a few. And Eric Beck is here to, to get started. And Eric, we can just go through each one and then we'll make a, a motion to adopt each one.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. Our first item, item number one, is a resolution authorizing a consultant agreement with Daleen Pride of Government Affairs Consultant. Daleen reviews license plate registrations for our office to make sure that the, the fees paid get credited to the county as opposed to municipality. The contract is to not exceed forty thousand dollars. Just as a point of reference, last calendar year, we paid Daleen just about seven thousand dollars and recovered about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in misappropriated revenues. So we feel that this is a benefit to the county.
Thank you so much. That, that's great when we, we make money off of it. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number one.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item number two is a resolution authorizing a joint agreement between Hamilton County and Harrison Township for the use of a salt and rubber tire loader in the, in the City of Harrison Salt Dome. That's a facility we share with the City of Harrison. This is an annual rental that we do on the, the equipment to load salt. It's not to exceed three thousand dollars. This, this allows us to use a good piece of equipment. Salt is very corrosive, and the maintenance cost of our own equipment would far exceed the rental. We share this, this is a joint cooperative agreement with, with the township. The next two items are very similar, so this is a cooperation with, with the township.
Would you like to go on with item three, since it is similar with the salt?
Sure. I, item three and item four are both very similar. Item three is same type of agreement, cost not to exceed two thousand dollars for a rubber tire loader agreement with Miami Township. And then item four is agreement not to exceed twenty eight hundred dollars for rubber tire loader agreement with Delhi Township and the Oak Hills Board of Education.
Thank you. Commissioners, are any comments or questions as it relates to item two, three, or four?
No comment, no questions.
No questions.
Okay, hearing done. I'd like to make a motion to adopt items two, three, and four.
Commissioner, oh, sorry. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is a resolution authorizing a joint agreement between Hamilton County and the City of Loveland for the installation of a flashing pedestrian signal on Rich Road at Phillips Park Driveway. The City of Loveland went through a, performed a traffic study and determined the needs for this, and they will be paying all the costs involved for this installation and maintenance.
Thank you. That's, that's also good to hear. Not that they have to pay, but, you know, we're able to, the cost is not on the county right now, so that, that's a good thing. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt item five.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six is a resolution determining necessity for and concluding that no land or property will be damaged. Determine that public convenience and welfare require the improvement to Hubble Road located in Colrain and Green Townships. This is project five oh two, looks like it must be five oh two, one, seven.
One, two.
I have a digit missing on what I'm showing, so there should be six digits there. The engineer's estimate is one billion, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred. These funding will be from our permissive auto funds and a fifty percent grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission.
Very good. I might open it up for any questions or comments.
Yes, Madam President, I just want to go back. This is Hubble Road and it's at Colrain and Green Township.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great. This is great, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Drehouse, anything? I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number six.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Thank you.
Thank you for leveraging those dollars and any shared services. We want to continue to do that, so. So we can move on to our consent agenda, agenda items. Item seven through twenty-eight, and we will accept item twenty-nine as into the record. But I'd like to open it up for any questions or comments as it relates to any of these items on the agenda. Vice President Alicia?
Yes, item number, yes, item number nine on the consent agenda is a resolution appointing members to the Community Development Advisory Committee. And just want to say certainly I'm supportive of that today, but I want to also continue as we look at boards and commissions. I want to reiterate again, opening up the process to have more people be able to participate. And I know sometimes we could get into a thing, well, all these people already know it. Well, no one's going to get to know it if they can't, if they're not participating. So one of the things I just wanted to highlight that, nothing on these members, but just in the future, just want to make sure we're outreach and allowing a lot of people into the process on a lot of the boards and commissions, because these are boards and commissions that have a lot of influence, power, and are making some very important recommendations. So I wanted to highlight that. Also, on the consent agenda, item number twenty-six. I just want to say that we had a good presentation on Tuesday, I believe it was, at the staff meeting, and this is the Contract for Women Helping Women, the divert program. And I think one of the things we had brought up was the phase two getting into African-American villages, communities, townships. And one of the things we had recommended was that there would be some work with Sheriff McGuffey, because a lot of the sheriff, a lot of the townships and villages, rather, they have the sheriffs. And so you'll be able to maybe get into these areas with working with them. So there was a, one of the things in their contract, it just indicated that they would be, you know, working with the sheriffs, McGuffey's team, and I think that's something all three of us kind of thought was a good idea as well. So that, I just want to thank them and thank the administration for adding that to, to their contract. So those were the only items that I had on the consent agenda that I wanted to highlight.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I think we skipped over items, regular agenda items, seven and eight.
Yeah.
Not consent, but regular agenda items. I just want to point that out. I don't have any questions about them. But I do want to note something. When it comes to consent, there is an item, it's item number twelve. It talks about a number of grants that are coming to the county, four hundred thousand of which are coming to Addiction Response Coalition. Megan Gosney is the director of HCARC, as you know, and she has done a spectacular job of seeking out grants for addiction services for Hamilton County and bringing money into this community. And so I just wanted to note that I believe this money is going to help expand the quick response teams that are countywide, and just a great job by Megan, you know, again, bringing dollars into the county that we would not otherwise have for addiction response and trying to get people into recovery. So I do want to applaud that, in addition to the other grants that are listed out in that item. And then related to divert, I, let me piggyback on what Commissioner Reese said. I, I had a conversation with Kristin Shrimflin after the meeting. I wish I had asked her to bring that map back up on the screen, because I too had some questions. Remember, this was a recommendation coming out of Commission on Women and Girls, so I wanted to get some particulars also to report back to them. And so the, the pilot project is especially targeted to the areas where they have seen the most calls to nine-one-one for domestic violence. And so that's part of the rationale behind where they're starting. They're also having some difficulty getting into some of the communities. They've done some outreach in some of the communities and either haven't gotten a call back or have not really gotten a very positive response. And so I think maybe, because the county is paying for this, it makes me wonder if maybe there's just not an understanding of the value add that divert provides to some of these local jurisdictions who have their own police departments, but don't fully appreciate the program. And so I reached out to Kristin and encouraged her to meet with the chiefs of police that is a collective organization for all of those police departments. I told her I'd be happy to join, or any of us I'm sure would be happy to join, to try to talk a little bit more about the benefit of having divert in their communities, so that when we talk about the pilot and where it should go, that all communities really have the opportunity to participate in that. So I, she, more to come on that front. She said she'd provide an update after we made some of those connections. But I, I don't disagree that it has to be open to everybody if they're receptive to it.
Absolutely.
Particularly the ones patrolled by the Sheriff's Department. So just a little bit more information on that one. And that's all I've got.
Vice President Reese, if you could do me a favor, I think what happens is I print my form off too early, and we have revisions, so item seven and eight, if you could just read what that is on the regular agenda for me?
Yes, item number seven is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Vantage Anderson LLC with respect to a community reinvestment area of the county.
Okay.
Item number seven.
Okay, so let's look at item seven. Any comments or questions as it relates to that?
What, this, this one is related to HCDC, and I believe Harry Blanton is on the line. Madam President, they're both HCDC items.
Yeah. Do you want me to read item number eight as well?
Yeah, why don't you go on?
Yeah, so item number eight is the resolution implementing sections three, seven, three, five, dot, seven, zero of the Ohio Revised Code, establishing and describing the boundaries of Anderson Township Community Reinvestment Area Two in Hamilton County, Ohio, and designating a housing officer to administer the program in creating a community reinvestment area housing council and a tax incentive review council. And I think we had town, we had a, I don't know, we don't call it town hall, but we had a session on.
Public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing, and Harry had went into detail. We had some folks on from Anderson Township.
Okay, thank you so much. Harry, you wanted to add some comments as it relates to those?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for your time. Yeah, I know that we presented to you on these back on February sixteenth, but I, I guess for the benefit of public, if it's okay, I can just really quickly explain both of them.
Sure.
So, thank you. Item number seven is an, an agreement, proposal for an agreement with Vantage, which is a developer of a site off of Five Mile Road in Anderson Township. The recommendation is for seventy-five percent for fifteen years, and this is supported by both the Township Trustees of Anderson Township and the School District, Forest Hill School District. The project is a two hundred twenty-four apartment unit project, a multi-family unit. And as you know, most of our retail centers and retail areas are struggling through the pandemic and even before the pandemic. So what a lot of developers have done is created what they call mixed-use projects, where you bring in residential along with office and retail, so that you have a sort of a twenty-four, seven-hour vibrant community where the residents in this apartment complex could actually support the small businesses in the area as well. So the, the idea behind this is that we can bring in some new residential units and bring some new customers to the small businesses in this area. There are also some topographical issues with the site that require some additional expense on the developer's side. This will also provide a new type of housing in Anderson Township for their empty nesters. Right now, they have a very low inventory of apartments for empty nesters, and so this would bring a new product to their community. Finally, on this project, the developer will be providing a new park-and-ride for the community at their own expense. It will be a covered parking garage with a climate-controlled space and, and also bathrooms for the general public to use the park-and-ride. And finally, they will also provide overflow parking for the Anderson Community Center. So that's the first item, number seven. And then item number eight is the establishment of a CRA off of Beauchamp Avenue closer to Mount Washington. And this is the old Skytop Retail Center. As you know from our previous meeting, it's about ninety-five percent vacant, and so the community is working with a developer who may be able to redevelop that for a new apartment complex. There's also some housing as a part of the CRA that are in need of some repair. One of the houses is actually condemned, and then there's some vacant housing as well. So this would also help with that. So this would just establish that CRA, but it would not necessarily approve the project this time. It would just allow us to send a petition to the state of Ohio to establish the CRA or the community investment area. So thank you for your time. I'd be happy to open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Harry. I had a, a good discussion with Harry earlier before the meeting and answered some of my questions as it relates to some of my concerns, but I think it's a good project, a good use, land use. And so I'm willing to move forward with these two projects, CRA projects. But I'll open it up for our commission, Vice President Reese.
No, I don't have any other questions. I think some of the concerns that were expressed earlier, I think, were addressed, so I'm ready to move forward as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, I have a question related to eight. I've just, I'm just now noticing this, Harry. I apologize for not catching this sooner. It talks about the establishment of the CRA in Anderson Township. It also says at the end, and a tax incentive review council. So we have a tax incentive review council. Is this in addition to that?
So it will just add this CRA to the, to the tax incentive review council's job, so it just will be another CRA that they have to review commercial agreements. And just to make it clear, so the projects that are being proposed here, both of these apartment complexes, they're multi-family apartment complexes, so they would be under the TIRC. The, the housing council is only for smaller residential applicants.
So, look, Madam President, if you don't mind, I'm going, I want to follow up on that. So are you saying that every time we establish a CRA or have a CRA project, they are automatically then reviewed by the TIRC?
Yeah, so the commercial projects, we will require every year for them to submit a form that explains and updates us on their progress and if they've met their goals or not. And then we will set up a TIRC for this specific CRA in Anderson Township, where those members will review each of those commercial agreements.
Okay, so.
Your question?
I, what, I, I thought, I thought it did until the very end there. So, so is it one TIRC or are there two?
So there, in, in essence, there are many TIRCs, but the county only appoints their members, which sit on all of these different TIRCs. So for each CRA, we will have a different TIRC, but the county's appointees are the same. So you will appoint three members to each of the TIRCs. The auditor appoints someone, then the local communities appoint two members, and then finally, the school district has a member as well.
I got you. Okay, so and to the benefit, I, I have, so the TIRC functions like, it's similar. We have something at the state level, or Commissioner Reese, we did, where we reviewed these economic development deals and made sure that both ends were holding up their end of the bargain, basically, and there's a clawback feature here. So this group meets once a year to review these. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how, how, how many we have and who the members are. So this is another one where we appoint members to this group. So I just to give a little background there related to the board and commissions. So, okay, Harry, I think, I think that answered my question. Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Harry. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item seven and item eight, which deals with two CRA agreements in Anderson Township.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Pointing out that we had some regular agenda items, so thank you. Teamwork, that's what I'm talking about, teamwork. So as we look at the consent agenda items, I just wanted to make, have a little summary for those that are watching that, as I was saying, there's seven, seven, number seven through twenty-eight, which twenty-nine we will accept for the record. But primarily, they are consisting of board appointments, as we said earlier, and also budget adjustments, along with several purchase agreements through JFS that are moving forward. And agreements also for service through the engineering. And agreements also for service through the engineers department. So any question, comments for the consent agenda items?
Madam President, also, I want to just go on channel, I mean, I'm just, number, item number twelve.
Okay.
Item number twelve, I do want to highlight, because I know that's twenty, twenty-point-eight million, and Commissioner Drehouse indicated one of the big chunks of the grants that came through here. But one of the biggest chunks is the fifteen million dollars that came in for rental assistance in here. So that money has arrived. And I know, I guess Jeff will be rolling out soon, but the money has arrived. And I just wanted, when people see this number, twenty, twenty million, fifteen million of that came from the grant we got for rental assistance.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
I'm just clarifying the, the items. I, I, I apologize for not paying better attention. Is it items number nine through twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Well, you know, since I printed off early, I'm going to say.
Twenty-nine. Twenty-nine.
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much. Okay, so we're not perfect. Well, I'm putting you guys in and I'm not perfect. So thank you so much, and Mike is ready to, to let me know that. So items nine through twenty-nine, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Any further business to come before the commission? Vice President Alicia Reese?
No further business.
Okay. Commissioner Drehouse?
The man.
Okay. I think I'm a little anxious because I'm going to get my vaccination and move. So.
Nice, lucky.
Alrighty, I'm, I'm, I won't say I'm old enough. I'm good enough to get it.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. All right, you guys take care and.
Oh, we got a motion.
To make a motion to, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.